Alright, good afternoon, everybody. It is Wednesday, July 28th, 2021. It's 3:32 PM. I'm called to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. We will be going to executive session and then coming back into open session. The reason why we'll be going to open executive session is Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to collect, or in order to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel interim town administrator. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Selectman Burnwell?
Yes.
Selectman Sager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, we're now in executive session. Alright, everybody, we're back in open session now. Thank you everyone for joining us. We'll be moving on to first, Jet Item 2, which is Discussion on Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Spending Plan. So, Kim, I know you're here for this, and I think everyone's here for this. So, let's kick it off. Where can we spend this money?
Well, let's just back up just a smidge and talk about what we have for money. So, in Direct Aid, and I'm just gonna put part of this as ARPA money, American Recovery Plan Act. So, directly, the town of Free Town is going to receive $983,256.40. So, we've already received half of that, or $491,628. In addition to that funding, Bristol County has also received, I wanna say almost $11 million? No, I'm sorry, $110 million. And the original estimate was that $1.8 million of that would be coming to Free Town. I attended the Commissioners' Meeting that was held on the 15th of July. They are still figuring out how they're gonna proceed with a distribution plan. So, I think at a minimum, they were talking about maybe withholding about 10% towards administrative costs, and then maybe carving out another piece to deal with entities that support the entire county. So, they're hoping to distribute, to have a plan in place for September 1st. That may be a little aggressive at this point, but everybody that was at the meeting wanted them to do the distribution based on per capita, rather than a project or needs-based distribution. So, at this point, for this meeting, we should just know that we will be getting additional money. We don't know exactly how much.
Well, Kim, for us real quick, so, per capita, is that for us, you think, or help us, I mean, we're relatively small population, right?
Yeah, yeah, but again, you know, there are a lot of, there are other big communities, but they may not have, they may not have like the project, same type of projects that we may need to do. I mean, I think we can say that there are some big-scale projects that we could use additional funding for, but I got the sense that everybody wants their pro-rata share of the pie. So, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of incentive for the Commission to do anything but per capita.
Yeah, probably just easier, right? I mean, the whole process, you know what you're gonna get, you can then plan on it.
Exactly.
You know?
Exactly.
Alright, sorry, as you were saying.
No, no, that's okay. So, we should know that there is a big chunk of money that will be coming. We don't know exactly how much. It will be more than likely less than the $1.8 million, but again, I would think it would be about $1.5 million. I can't see that much coming off the top. So, again, hopefully, they will have a plan in place beginning of September, and we'll find out where we go from there. So, we do have a good chunk of money that we need to talk about how we can spend it. So, there was a handout that had been emailed, and I just kinda wanted to go over very top level on the eligible uses, which is a handout that says overview of eligible uses. There are basically five core areas for using these funds. Public health spending, economic impacts of the public health emergency, lost public sector revenue, premium pay for essential workers, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So, that's just the big broad categories, and then we've also, I've also provided detail of eligible uses within those broad categories. So, I think overall, what I think we need to try and come up with is, are there specific areas of the five core ones that we know we want to fund, and others that maybe we don't want to fund? And then, once we can kind of figure out if there's anything that we're not going to fund, then we could dive a little bit deeper into eligible uses, the detail of those, and see what types of programs or services we might want to do. I don't know if everybody was able to review the handouts prior to coming here. So, again, I don't wanna take up a lot of time going through, you know, all of the detail. But should we just maybe talk about them overall and see kind of if there's a feeling?
Yeah.
Or unless the board already has some input as to specific, out of the five areas, what you would wanna focus on?
Well, for me personally, I'm interested in the sewer, right? I think that, you know, this is potentially a huge opportunity, at least for Main Street and Sonnet, right? If we're able to go forward, and this chunk of money, I think, gets started down that path. So, I'd like to hear, you know, what the Water and Sewer Commission has thoughts on that.
Who'd take all the money? There's no one.
So, but that's like, just like-
That is a, that is a main thing.
Yeah. You know, I think there's definitely a long, potentially a lot of long-term economic, you know, improvements from that area will come from that type of investment. Now, but that's just, I wanna make sure I'm not just closing out any other potential uses on this, just because that's something, a long-term goal that I personally have. But, you know, I'm very open to other suggestions, what else, you know, we have. I don't know if the rest of the board is anything.
I'm on board with that, and I would also like to add the pay for the essential workers, right? So, there's been a lot of talk of the people who had to work throughout all of this and getting a little extra something. So, I would think that maybe there's something we could do about that, but I won't keep some of the funding for that.
Yeah, I guess the question is that, is like, so how does that work practically, right? Like, is it, you know, is this outside, like, are you union negotiations, right? Like, outside of that, this is just an additional premium that they get paid for a short period of time, or?
Yeah, so, under the details, providing pay for essential workers.
What page that's on?
It's on page 6 of the second packet.
Alright.
So, it gives examples, staff at nursing homes, hospitals, home care settings, workers at farms, food production facilities, grocery stores and restaurants, janitors and sanitation workers, public health and safety staff, truck drivers, transit staff, childcare workers, educated school staff, social service and human services staff. So, I would say clearly, well, we do have public health and safety staff. We have one janitor. And again, the idea is, it says premium pay that would increase a worker's total pay above 150% of the greater of the state or county average annual wage requires... Yeah, so I think, again, I think they're trying to focus on folks that maybe have a lower rate of pay. So, we'd have to kind of do that calculation and just make sure that if you were to pay a premium, you would not exceed those thresholds. So, it's something we can definitely look into.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, anything's worth looking at, I guess.
Well, exactly, and I think the overall idea is to just kind of say, you know, are there areas that we wanna look at? I don't think we're gonna come up with an actual spending plan, per se, today.
Yeah, no, this is just getting the ball rolling, right?
Right, right, so certainly, that's definitely something that we can look into. So, I would circle that as a yes, that we can look into that.
Okay.
I have a question. It appears to me that this isn't only, this isn't limited to just the employees of the town. This is, this is-
Correct.
Of the people, right?
Correct.
Throughout the community.
Yes. Yep.
Interesting. So, okay, so definitely, sorry, go.
What's the total amount again?
Total amount that we have awarded?
Yeah.
Question here.
What's that?
In the back.
Yeah.
Way in the back. We, when we were doing the police station, this project last year, there was a question about funds and reimbursement of funds because of our over expenditures. We didn't go over our budget, but we went over what we had allotted because of COVID. I think it was $300,000 or so.
Yeah, because of all the litigation we had to do.
Shut down mitigation, we had to do temperature checks on the employees multiple times a day, and all that, and we had overruns. Is any of this can be used towards that, or is there, I believe in the First CARES Act, there was money set aside for it, but I don't know if that was ever rewarded, if that was-
Okay, so just an update on that. We put in two projects to FEMA to cover the cost of the cleaning of the facility. Those have both been approved. So, that funding will come back to us at 100%. The remaining costs for the extension of the OPM and the general contractor, those are being funded through CARES. So, all of those overruns are being covered.
Alright, so we don't have to worry about lumping those in, so we are approved for those, so we don't have to worry about lumping those into this, because this would be available, there would be extra expenditures that we had to put out with it, on the, I think it was number four or so.
Yeah, correct, but those are all covered up to this point.
That's great news.
It is great news.
That is great news.
It is great news.
That puts about a half a million on the budget that we came up with.
Yep.
That's awesome. Alright, so I guess, any other ideas right off the bat, or should we kind of go through these five eligible uses real quickly and talk about any ideas for those, or whether we even want to consider them or not?
Just one comment on the economic, number two, the economic impacts. So, that I believe is, oh no, I'm sorry, number three, payments used to lost-
Lost public sector, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a very detailed calculation about determining whether we've actually had any lost revenue that we could recoup and use for services. So, I started that calculation. I've been doing it most of the day, so I'm not done with it. So, I would think that we might wanna keep that as a possible yes.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know how much it's gonna come out to at this point, but I think that is something to consider.
It's a nice, easy one to do, right? It's just a form, I mean, I'm sure the formula's hard. I shouldn't say that. The formula's hard, but once you get the formula done, it's easy to explain, right?
Exactly.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so that's in process. And I had already heard from Chief Abbott that one of the, within the public safety sector, one of the uses that folks are using that revenue recoup for is to do the additional training that's being required for police reform. So, he's already given me some information on that. So, once I know if we're gonna have that revenue loss available, I can certainly let the group know what he, what his idea would be for some of that.
And so, just, this might be a silly question, but like, so, to actually use the money for, within this kind of, this area, do we have to have a spending plan for specifically where the money's gonna go?
Yeah.
It's not, we don't just have to do the calculation and get the money and figure it out later on? We'll have to have that spending plan before we can actually start writing checks?
Yes.
Figuratively, I don't think we're actually gonna write any literal checks. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so I'm putting that one as definitely a yes, though.
Okay.
Don't know how much yet.
Right.
And then, so, economic impacts of the public health emergency. Economic impacts of the public health emergency. I guess let's talk about that one real quick.
So, under the, like, the more detailed explanation, they give some basic, well, some big bullets, delivering assistance to workers and families. So, again, this is not just within the town, you know, the town government. Obviously, it can help folks that are unemployed, and if they're having any type of food or housing insecurity, supporting small businesses, helping with tourism and travel and hospitality, and then being able to, rehiring public sector staff and replenishing unemployment insurance trust funds. So, we don't actually have an unemployment insurance trust fund, so that would not be an option there. We did not have any layoffs due to COVID.
And now, this one, there's not a formula, right?
No, no.
This is just kind of, we plead our case, like, say this small business, you know, they, they went out, or they have to still be in business now, but say they're, you know, their revenue decreased by 70% because of this.
Yep.
We'd like to give them this much money to help them out.
Yeah, so again, this may also be an issue where we have to do some type of community outreach to see who might be interested in taking advantage of any of these, these uses.
Otherwise, it's just gonna look like we're picking and choosing winners, which, you know? So, I think we definitely need to have some kind of open and fair way to at least get requests in, right?
Yep. I mean, unless, I don't know if anything has come to the board at this point from anyone in the community.
Not really, I mean, we didn't, I can't think of anything really, like, weren't, we were luckily kind of insulated from a lot of the horrible impacts that had in other communities, just 'cause, I mean, we don't have that many restaurants that really shut down. Really, you know, I mean, every, I think more people started spending more time in town because they weren't leaving to go to work. So, they're probably spending more money in local businesses, you know, personally, that's what I was doing.
That's true.
Yeah. Which money I spent on smoothies, that's a question I made.
I mean, I'll be interested to see what kind of a shortfall there actually was relative to local receipts, because to your point, no major things shut down, people were working. I don't know of any-
I can't think of anything.
Things that haven't been able to pay taxes and were starting to go out because they always pay the thousands of dollars in taxes.
I think the only places I can think of is the Sonora Roasters, nephews.
Yeah.
Right, but again, but they utilized their own emergency funds that they got from the federal government for this. And we talked about, you know, reimbursement, people are already receiving unemployment out there and, you know, out there already.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, there's monies that have already been dispersed to restaurants and some of these businesses through PPE, even the loans, small business loans and all. So, we were fortunate, right? We didn't have a large facility that shut down and was closed down now.
Like a big sports facility.
Yeah, yeah, just something where they had to close the doors and they're no longer paying taxes and, you know, and so, I think we were fortunate in there.
Maybe daycares, I can see that, maybe if they had a shutdown for a while, but they probably were still charging.
But again, most of these folks and businesses were already eligible for PPE.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
So, it has to be kind of lower threshold of the grabs. Yeah.
What was it, sir?
PPP.
PPP.
Big Check Protection Program.
Yes, what you said. But, and so they took advantage of it, right? And they utilized that.
If you want a threshold, you could do the second PPP, which is a lot more restrictive than the first PPP. PPP, the second PPP requires a business to be down at least 20% in annual revenue from prior to 2020. So, you use 2019's annual revenue matched against 2020's annual revenue, it was less than, if it was less than 20, it was more than 20% degraded, you would qualify for the second PPP. And they set a cap at, it was a lot smaller cap. Before it was unlimited, that's why you get big businesses fighting millions of dollars. The second round was a lot smaller, and it was a lot higher threshold to clear. Not many businesses cleared. I know that because I did clear it without reference, it was worth around 20%.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, so, yeah, but we'll have to do some community outreach on that, figure out, you know, start fielding requests, which is gonna be, we'll have to figure out who's gonna be responsible for fielding those, because, you know, we are a bit short-staffed ourselves, so I, yeah, there could be a lot, so.
This sounds like a program to echo what Bob just said. I mean, if we're looking at who's qualified, you're gonna produce all your info. It almost sounds like a large-scale government program that you need to apply to, and people are gonna go through, and-
So, maybe we don't look into this.
I'm not saying that, not saying that at all. What I am saying is to your point, Trev, you made a very good point. Currently, we are a little bit understaffed as it is, right?
Yeah.
We're still recovering, if you will, from the COVID and everything else going on. We're trying to bring staffing levels up. We understand that. And so, if I'm being a little selfish, I would like to see a lot of this money, because again, with the PPP, you know, we weren't eligible for that stuff, right, as a municipality. We didn't get that. Yeah, we got CARES Act, but we're just now finding out that it's gonna cover a lot of the costs, and that's great.
Yeah.
We have some, I think we have some immediate needs that are on these lists.
Yeah.
You know? Water and sewer, I don't know what broadband is like at some of these places, but I can tell you Station One doesn't have Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Right? Fire Station One, so there's something that we can utilize for that. With the uptick in this new Delta variant, Corona, and who knows what it's gonna be, I can tell you that there's increased activity relative to contact tracing, so I'm gonna be selfish. And I'm just gonna ask that, and I know that Kim has been very, very good about reaching out to my, to the town public health nurse, relative to that, right? So, you know, hopefully Lori can utilize some of that with help
Yeah.
to do contact tracing, but, you know, so there may be some things down the road that all of a sudden are thrust upon us, and if we're not giving the money and the funds to-
Yeah, I mean-
take care of that.
She'll probably, I'm assuming, part of that's staffing too, right? Because the contract tracing takes a long time.
It does.
Right?
It does.
You need just more feet in the ground.
You just, right, if it's only a handful a week, well, I don't wanna speak for the nurse, but if it's only a handful a week, but when you're talking, you know, you open up and you get another 20, 30, you know, multiple calls, then you gotta call the people that they had traced, so you know it's a lot.
Yeah, absolutely. And any other, like, so, I think we talked about, you know, these bottom four, so, for public health spending, that's a good suggestion of like, you know, funds to support contract, contract, contract chasing. Wow, it's a tough one.
Contact tracing, yeah.
Contact tracing, got it.
CT, yeah.
Anything else of that nature that we think, you know, is it, is it the PPE stuff, you know, things of that nature?
Yeah, just a kind of an update, I did speak with Lori yesterday. So, we do have a significant amount of money still remaining through CARES. So, I think we're talking, I mean, we have over $100,000. So, again, I don't know how bad it's going to get coming from-
Yeah, I don't know any of that. I'm just, like I said, I would be selfish. I don't want her tied up, you know, all weekend doing her stuff again.
Right, right, so, again, we do have that, that funding source, and we have no other immediate plans to use CARES money except for, you know, just contact tracing. There's someone helping with, over at the COA, that's using CARES funding. And, you know, other than that, we don't have anything really committed. So, I think in terms of public health, that the CARES funding may be enough to satisfy that piece.
See, I told you she had it under control.
Yeah, of course, always does.
She always does.
And I know that the fire department, EMS, they have a ton of PPE on hand. So, in terms of any type of purchases for that, I don't think we're going to need that. So, although, I mean, I know this is COVID money, and you would think that the public health spending piece would be significant, we have gotten so much help between financial aid and just donations and all of that. So, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't put something towards it, but I think it can probably be a relatively small piece based on what we have. So, just kind of thinking about maybe like percentages, even if you were to say put like 10% towards public health spending, and maybe 10% towards economic impacts. I mean, obviously, we want the, it sounds like the biggest bulk should be towards water sewer, because those are the biggest ticket items that we would be able to work with.
And it's a bit of a unique opportunity for us to use this kind of state money for something of this nature, right? Where the CARES Act might cover a lot of the other stuff already.
Yeah, I'm thinking 10% is probably even high for those little ones, right? Based on what you were just saying, Kim, 10%?
And remember, this funding goes, the term of this goes till 2024.
Okay.
So, we have plenty of time to utilize, to utilize this, and don't forget, once, we could just do percentages based on the funding that we're talking about right now. Then if we, when we find out the Bristol County piece, then we can reevaluate, and maybe all of that money goes towards water and sewer. Is kind of what I'm kind of thinking. So, I mean, again, 10% may be too high, but I think we just need to think in terms of percentages as opposed to, you know, like, actual dollars.
Yeah, no, I agree, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just thinking, because you were saying, hey, we're, we're not flushed with money as to provide the long-term use, but we have quite a bit of money within that right now.
We do.
Taking $98,000 to put towards public health spending, when you say we already have quite a bit in there, I don't know. That's why, that was the only reason why, but I'm gonna follow you as a guide.
But again, this is, this is gonna go through 2024.
Yeah, yeah, so divide that out, so yeah.
So, I mean, again, I don't-
Yeah, and I think we'll kind of figure that out, like, as we go along here a little bit, right? I don't know if we can make a decision exactly on the percentage breakdowns today, obviously, but, no. So, one thing I kind of wanna talk about, the sewer, you know, I think broadband's a good idea too. Yep, we should have live, high-speed internet everywhere, like, that's definitely something we need to look into. But when it comes to like the sewer line, right, like, specifically, or, and I'm not saying, I'm not asking you to answer this now, but what, where can the money go towards, like, I'm not familiar with this type of project, right? Like, what is the first steps that we even have to take to get this kind of sewer project going, right? And that's what, for the spending plan, we'll need some kind of, you know, concrete action plan, right?
I mean, estimate of what is-
So, engineering work?
Yeah, feasibility study.
Feasibility study, that makes sense?
I do have a question, though. Kim, these funds could be utilized for engineering and design work?
Um, it says-
Yeah, I read it, and it wasn't very 100% specific, but in government speak, sometimes that's good.
Yeah.
You know, when they talk about public health, well, you know, bringing in sewer eliminates septic systems that are failing, which eliminates a public health.
Yeah.
So, I mean, things can be, everything can be tied to public health.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, this is, when Senator Rogers called me on this, I specifically brought this up, and he's like, and I said, and I mentioned, like, you know, the engineering, kind of get the ball rolling on this, and he was like, sounds like a great idea to me, not the second season in the week.
Yeah, I mean, recipients been used as funding to invest in wastewater infrastructure projects. Well, I would assume that engineering would be part of that, which is why I was asking.
Yeah.
And, so, that's a major part of this, is actually designing a system that can go in there.
Yeah.
You know, and be utilized for that. Now, we've done some rudimentary sewer extension study, right? We've done that already. But I know that for types of projects like this, you have, there's an increased level of scrutiny that goes into, you know, site conditions. They may have to go and do test borries, they may have a number of things that, so they come up with definitive plans. You know, you may find out that with this, we need lift stations, you know, pump stations. Okay, well, where do we put them? We already have town-owned property, or do we need to-
Could we buy property under eminent domain with this kind of money?
Well, right, so my point is, right, it's not, yeah, I don't know, but, but-
Always try to push the limit, right away, you know?
So, sewer's different than water, right? And there could be unexpected expenses or costs. Having the best and most detailed construction plans and cost estimate, I think that goes a long way. You know, they talk about shovel-ready projects and things like that. Part of being shovel-ready is having the design and plans all approved.
Exactly, and that's what, so, my, this is my thought on this, right? If we get the design, we get this going, I think that there's gonna be big infrastructure bills, federal money coming. And if we have shovel-ready projects, this might be up to be a good candidate for us to use that, right?
There are already existing low-interest loans through the state to do these types of projects as it is. So, if we can get a, I mean, I'm going to assume that engineering is going to cost potentially, you know, maybe $100,000. I don't know, but to find out the level of design, if you have to design pumps, systems and pump stations, there's a design, that's a design that, I mean, that could easily cost you a good chunk of money.
So, say, so just kind of high levels, so say sewer, $100K for sewer, this would be in a Sonnet. Now, we can't ignore- So say, so just kind of high levels, so say sewer, a hundred K for sewer, this would be an ASONIT. Now, we can't ignore East Freetown, right? Is there any similar projects? I know there, I think there's a water project potentially, is that sound extending, uh, or maybe it's, no, sewer as well at East Freetown, right?
No.
No, no.
No, no, don't, there was, I'm saying, there's no idea of extending or or connecting over there to anything?
No, the practicality of it, right? So sewer, I think, goes as far as up, uh, County Road, Middleborough Road, right, uh, to the town line thereabouts.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, yeah, the Brayley Road, this was talked about many, many years ago. John actually was a selectman at the time. It it goes just about, if you, so if you go down, uh, uh, East Chippewa Road, turns into Brayley, New Bedford, but those condominiums down there, they have town sewer, city sewer, excuse me.
Yeah.
So, you gotta look at just.
That's stupid.
That is stupid, that's right, but you, so you gotta look at the feasibility of actually getting it into town.
Yeah.
You know, like, that Roundville Drive is never gonna see sewer any time in the near future, because it's not there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, there was talk about relatively the bring water or sewer down to, come up point, that kind of deal.
Yeah.
That is, that was a while ago, but I don't know if there's still interest in that or not, but as far as, there's no water or sewer projects that we know of in East Freetown.
Or any, yeah, I mean.
Not even proposed, no, no new subdivision.
Well, nothing.
No, but we had the feasibility study done for water line to bring to here, which that could be resurrected quite easily. If you already has all the calculations, that doesn't change. They've gone to update their quotes, but you already have a so, a water study to bring, bring it here. Went to Tommy, Florida, I don't know if you guys went to it, but went to Tommy in Florida, it shot down in flames. But all that, all the labor was done on it.
Okay.
One of the, the SONIT was done for, was a sewer study. It brought, there was two parts to it. First part was bringing it down and tying into all the side streets, Simpson Lane, High Street. That was, that was that giant one. Uh, we asked them to, the board at that time asked them to tear it down, move a trunk line. That number was half of what the first price was. That's could be resurrected. But what you need to size was pretty much an RFP probably
Mm-hmm.
to do a, do a feasibility study. They'll see what's there. If you're talking about that possible project with, on South Main Street, using that, or go water line, be able to water line. Then they would have to go there, explore the water line, see, like, to Kevin's point, maybe pop it open a couple of places, maybe run a snake up it, they have a remote control camera, run up it, and see if it's all intact and all, all. From there, they'll give you an accurate assessment of what's there, what can be done, and a basic price number. That's where you start from there, and then from there, you can bring that people to Tommy. You'll have a number of how much it should cost for your engineering from there, cause then you'll need real detailed engineering, not just a feasibility study, and you can bring all that stuff to Tommy, depending on what your budgets are for for your new new grants here and whatever the shortcomings would be or whatever.
Gotcha.
So your first step would be, and EPG did a lot of the work, which is the towns and background, the potter's group, the town uses a lot for, um, engineering.
Mm-hmm.
So those are the ones you really wanna reach out to, see what's what's there, what, when, when to resurrect, but those are the closest products that I know that were shovel-ready, close to shovel-ready.
All right, Sid?
As far as sewer, East Freetown, one of the things that comes to mind is that we have water going up to the fire station in East Freetown. We could extend that line around the corner onto Washburn and hit the library that does not have good water at all.
Yeah.
So that's a very short distance to go.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, I guess the bridge, was it the issue with the bridge, that?
Again, that's why you have engineering. We're the idea people, you know, this is where we wanna bring it to, this is, and we identify that. After that, the feasibility comes in, that's when you bring in the engineering professionals. But yes, to answer your question, there's an inherent, uh, 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 difficulty with the bridge going up the fall block.
Yeah.
But it might be that there's enough depth that it's just a matter of putting it right in the road. Going under, like we had to do under the Elm Street Bridge, we had to go under the, something like that.
That would.
Monumental expense, so.
That would help, that would help the library part of it.
And the church, right, again, you know, you're talking about gathering places for a large number of people, public health, I mean.
Church across the street.
Yeah.
In fact, I mean, we use the.
Target's.
The parking lot. We don't have a po, any parking facilities for the library.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I think in a perfect world where where we have had a le, a level of interest, or we know that there's difficulty with wells, getting some feasibility studies done and or, uh, getting some engineering drawn up, that that takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. Now you know with some sort of predictability how much it's going to cost to do these projects. Now we know, do we go off to borrow, how much it's gonna cost? Do we do betterment, so people know how much? You know, we've got interest in a couple of other a little areas that don't currently on service by water and and geez. Getting the engineering done, that's a huge cost. And once you get there, now you're eligible, shovel-ready projects, uh, low-interest, uh, uh, funding.
How would you, uh, on the sewer line, which I think is a, you know, we should do that.
Mm-hmm.
But how would you, if we ran that line down, how would you, uh, assess the the cost from the idea? Would you do a betterment? I mean, certainly you're not gonna get the money.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think it makes sense to do it that way, right? Like, you do a betterment, I don't know, I don't know how we do that.
Then we'd have to get an awful lot of money from the, from the state to put that, to energize that sewer line all the way.
Yeah, I told, and those are the problem. I wa, I wanna have those problems someday and figure out that part of it. Yeah, I think that the first step is us getting, getting it going, right? And I just, you know, I don't want that kind of, the maybes to prevent us from going forward with this, right?
Well, I I agree with you. What I'm saying is, when, I I'm for doing it, but the price that, uh, will be significant, we'd have to get a lot of money.
Yeah.
To do it.
No, I agree. I mean, so, but we'll value part of the feasibility, feasibility, feasibility study.
Yeah, and and some, some of that work has already been done and and looked at and to see, you know, a, and again, if if the bulk of this is gonna be paid for with, uh, federal funds set, whatever, uh, then then obviously the betterments don't have to be as much.
Yeah.
But if we're gonna start looking at, these are gonna be betterments, and then we have to start looking at, are we requiring people to tie into this? You know, there are, again, there are just a lot of questions, but most of them start with how much is this going to cost and can it even be done?
Yeah.
That's where you do the feasibility, to Bob, Joe's point, you know, you're doing RFP, feasibility, can it be done? Do we have to purchase property? How many thousand tanks do we need on lift stations that we're going to need, and the mechanics have it all?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of people are gonna, you know, just generally, right, if if I could get sewer over by septic, and if I, I'm I'm sure a lot of these septicists will be failing sooner than later.
I I agree with you. I agree with you, as a component to this.
I agree where you catch them to, is when the, the system fails, now they wanna tie in, okay, it's a seventy-five hundred dollar tie-in fee.
Save you fifteen grand.
And that helps down the line, just getting paid back.
Yeah.
But to to Kevin's point too, we did, uh, you might not even need the RFP, thinking about it, I think engineering is exempt from RFP rules. You'd have to.
You can.
I don't know who, uh, presuming.
The engineering is, but the feasibility study is.
Right, correct. But the, you, you, so, last one, last round, we got, that sewer study was thirty-three thousand, if I remember certainly right. Um, we had a grant of thirty, so we only ended up at Tommy, the three thousand dollars. If you're resurrecting that, you might be able to save significantly from there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it might be ten thousand, might be, I I don't know, I'm just, I don't know, I shouldn't do that, but it should be significantly less. And if it was only thirty thousand, thirty, thirty-three thousand first round, you're not talking hundreds of thousands at this point for engineering, you know, feasibility study. It should be relatively short money.
All right.
Um, you know, in the general scheme of the project.
I have a warrant to pay the wrong, right?
Yeah.
That's what you need, you need the, you need the study.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, as I said, we did the sewer extension study to a certain degree, and different options. Options, and also, if you don't already have it, I think your office has it, and we could certainly make it available and get more, um.
All right.
The difference is that on that engineering study that was done, it it didn't talk about using an existing.
That's that coal yard.
Yeah, but your, your flow rates are still gonna be the same, those will be all the same.
Yeah, they, that's, that's right, but, I mean, that's good.
You know, whether you're, cause they were using a semi-foss main, so each, each system had a, had its own small, low-pressure frost, so each house had a pump station. Uh, which you probably wouldn't have to do that, you'd probably be able to gravity down the hill to the four corners somewhere, and a pump station, preferably a subterranean pump station down there, maybe put parking over the top, leaving some parking concerns with the son, the, the town hall.
Yeah.
And then from there, you pressure, high-pressure up, which would only be a three-inch pipe up the hill, all the way up towards the next pump station would probably hit somewhere around, I wanna say Junius Plaza, maybe a little bit further than that, maybe down by, um, Circle K.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that should get you to the next pump station, which is already there, which we build with our stop and shop. Um, so.
Seems easy when you describe it like that.
Not that I haven't done this shit, not yet, but I've been looking at this for three years.
Yeah.
Um, but those, a lot of the, the flow rates, it's a false point, the flow rates, a lot of those stuff there, what you're gonna need to, for the service, all that stuff should be there. Yes, you're gonna have to have some new money to see, okay, what is there, what's valuable that's there? You know, and as we said in another meeting, that getting under the highway, mass highway is the the biggest thing, and you're gonna save at least three million dollars, just just by using that as a conduit to get on the gas.
Yeah, that's huge.
So, and that might be the whole project, might be the total cost of the whole project versus just the savings on on a twelve billion dollar project.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that they they can utilize that line that's there now, that's a big diff, huge change, because they didn't, that was never considered.
No.
It was never considered.
Yeah.
So it just, it could reduce the cost.
The traffic, the traffic nightmares of trying to trench the entire Salt Main Street, getting over the bridges, getting, you know, the one, the single-翼 bridge that we just re-pointed. The town just re-pointed, and and disturbing that was, that would be tough.
Yeah.
If you've got a conduit that's already there, and we can sleeve, it's like works as a sleeve, and it's really a little brand.
All right, so I don't think we're gonna make any final decisions today. I think that we, it's a good conversation, get the ball rolling, we'll have to kinda keep up on this. Um, is there anything else, Kim, that, you know, before we move on from this?
Well, I just wanted to bring, I know we've talked about water sewer, just one thing to keep in mind, this can also be used for stormwater infrastructure, which is another big area that the town really, um, hasn't fully addressed. Um, so I believe that we have, um, a proposal from EPG for stormwater engineering. It's about a hundred and thirty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't know if that will complete the engineering that needs to be done, um, for the management, and then I don't know what's involved in terms of any construction that might need to happen for that, so that's just another area to think about.
Yeah, if if we need, I mean, if that's something we we could put this money towards and we need to do it.
Yeah.
Right, and is this related to the MS four?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Which I don't really know what that means yet, but it doesn't sound good. Um, okay, that that's, that's a great point, so I think that's something we definitely should consider, so.
And again, that would apply throughout town, not just one side of town.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So.
All right, so I don't think there's any votes to take on this or anything like that, but I think this is a good starting point, and I definitely learned some more stuff about it, and I think we'll both, we'll continue this on and and figure out how to best utilize this money, that's all.
Awesome.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so now, I guess I'll move on to agenda item six, which is, uh, the letter from the Water and Sewer Commission, just so that, you know, we have everyone here. Paul, do you wanna read the letter, or do you want me to?
Well, you can read it.
Okay. Hold on, I'm trying to find it here. Oh, it's on the wrong one. Okay, Honorable Board. Zoom in here. Uh, the Freetown Water and Sewer Commission is requesting that you allow our department to move to the old police station building on Chase Road. As you know, we are housed in exceedingly, exceedingly small office on the first floor of the town hall, and we can barely fit two desks in the office. We do not have adequate space to store files, electronic equipment, and drawings, uh, of our infrastructure. The town hall built a new police station because our police station needed much more space. However, the town recently spent a good amount, deal of money to update the old police station's HVAC system and mitigated mold caused by leaks in the attic uh, from an old heating system. The police building, the old police building would be adequate for our needs. We suggest that you consider relocating the, the building department, board of health department, conservation and planning departments, um, to this facility. This has been, uh, discussed at selectives meeting, police station building, um, committee meetings, and with the last two town administrators. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, Freetown Water and Sewer Commissioners. Okay, so, as you know, we do have the, um, the food pantry that is utilizing that space right now, and we we are in agreement with them for, it's actually on, for about twenty-four months is what that agreement is. But, that being said, I I invited Craig to come today to speak on behalf of that. I think there's some compromise that we can do here. So, uh, Craig, you wanted to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, everybody hears me with the food pantry, honestly, and, uh, we're utilizing, uh, the building, and it, we, we're utilizing pretty much every inch of it. As you can see, it's all outfitted with shelving and everything. However, I, uh, Trevor told me about it, and, uh, I said, you know, I know you need some water space, so what I was figuring is, we'd be more than glad to let you guys utilize the front lobby section to take that section and the bathroom of the facility.
Well, that would be, that would be an awfully, making, my point when we discussed it at the water commission meeting was that for two and a half years, we've been talking about the construction of the, uh, police station, the planning, and, uh, and there was a discussion of what we were gonna do with the old building. Uh, at the time, one of our selectmen, uh, uh, Valley wanted to bulldoze the building. And I remember when Lee and I were on the board, with Lisa, uh, we put a good amount of money, I had probably somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars to facilitate that thing, and we had to discuss, and the building committee had discussed, and I talked to board members. It, it, you know, had meetings about, this is before you guys, uh, that you could use that facility to move the water commission, the building department, down there, the health department. You could take the people that live upstairs, that work upstairs, you know, conservation, planning, they could go there, and it would alleviate a lot of space down the town hall. That was the point.
So, Paul, can I get my take on this? So, I think that, first, the the food pantry is doing a lot of good work in town right now. They're they're feeding about si, fifty to seventy families twice a week.
Well, I I understand, and I have nothing.
I, yeah, just wanna make that clear, right? That that they're, they're really, they are doing an important, uh, filling an important gap we have right now. Now, what's gonna happen though, right, is hopefully, if the town approves it, we're gonna be, you know, doing a nice addition on the COA. And they're gonna have a lot more room in the COA, where the food pantry will be able to move as soon as that's done, right? But right now, you know, while that construction, you know, hopefully will start very soon, I think it ma, I think it makes sense for them to stay where they are now and utilize the the back half of that building. This is, you know how many square feet, Craig, that this new space would be in the front that they could use?
Uh, I think it'd be a couple hundred square feet. The whole front lobby, you take that, you know, the the job where the, uh, you just have a photocopy machine and all that stuff, Paul, to do the reports, where the printers work.
Yeah.
So take that whole job right out there, so the whole lobby is now wide open.
Well, and the, and the communication.
No, communication, because that's all cement, yeah. So, but you have the, that whole front section there and the bathroom.
Hundred and thirty square feet.
Yeah, hundred and thirty square, yeah.
It was a hundred and thirty square feet. I looked at it. It's probably not worth doing if, if they're gonna move in two years, at that point, what are you gonna do? You know, maybe we can move that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm all on board with that, you know, that makes sense to me, and it is kind of all, also dependent on what happens. Hopefully, the town does go forward with putting this addition on.
Well, I would hope that the town votes to put the addition up.
Me too. But I just wanna make sure, you know, I'm clear about, you know, I can only control so much.
It would be probably less than two years either.
Yeah.
Could be.
I mean, I, I, I'm just, you know, be realistic with somehow long these things usually take, from what I've seen already, so.
One of the things that, uh, we have one origin that, and we hope we can discuss it for you today, is the fact that it's very difficult to run the water and sewer department on an enterprise fund. Now, this is something that we've talked about for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And even when our pot is at EEP, they say, we can't believe that you're an enterprise fund with only six hundred or s, six hundred and fifty meters.
Yeah.
One of the things that w- w- we're contemplating is to put an article on the special town meeting to revert back to a town department. The unfortunate thing with us as an enterprise fund is that we're the only, uh, we're a town department, basically, but it's a funding mechanism.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And the funding mechanism puts everything on the six hundred and fifty customers, no matter what. We have a break on a water main, and we we have to scrounge for the money. We have, you know, we don't have the funds to operate. One of the things that the town hits us with is indirect cost. Uh, this year's ninety-three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
What is the indirect cost? What is the?
The indirect cost pays for our little space.
Oh.
The insured. We're the only people that have that.
Yeah.
And, uh, anyway, but I think we, I think we're, I think we're gonna end up putting an article on the special town meeting to revert back to a town department. I mean, it, it, it's crazy.
I hear you. So unfortunately, that that's on the agenda right now, so I can't really talk about it, or, you know.
No, you, okay, I'm talking about it because it's on our agenda.
Okay, that's totally fine, just, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, so, offers out there, if you guys wanna go check out this space, you know, the front office, see if it is worth it. If you know, maybe, even if it just, you know, helps out a little bit, if you have an extra, some extra space to work with, you know. If you know, maybe, even if it just, you know, helps out a little bit, if you have an extra, some extra space to work with, you know?
Kevin, I think it's probably approximately twice the size of what you have now.
It might be.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's about.
All we have is a closet.
Yeah, you gotta, only go to the closet, you.
No, no, I, I, I understand, I mean, the reality is, it's, it's probably eight foot by ten, we'll just call it for round numbers, it's probably, you know, eighty square feet. So there's no doubt that what you're proposing would be more room.
Yeah.
I see no reason to even move now, I mean, let them use the facility, it's already a done deal anyway.
Yeah.
And when things change.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, yeah.
I think it's more, what the most important part about this, right, I hate to be the one to bring it up, but it's communication.
Mm-hmm.
It's everybody being on the same page, right?
Yeah.
You've been around long enough, you've been around, George, you've been around long enough too, right? How many times do we have to keep having conversations and then we always have to go back to, well, you know, we've been talking about this for a while.
Yeah.
And it's always seems like it's too late, and in this one, it's a lose-lose. We don't wanna fight the food bank, cause the food pantry, good God, they're doing God's work here, for the love of God, right? So, you know, uh, but at the same time, there was, it was identified and it was a very real need and this goes back several years.
Yeah.
Years and years.
And, and to be honest with you, like, what, what, the way it was described to me, you know, when I was on the board and, you know, I was, there was a lot of information I was, I was trying to take in all at once, you know, those first couple of months when I was on the board. But I was pretty much told, it's either the building's gonna be knocked down or we're gonna, or we can use it for this great purpose, right? And that's kind of what I was communicating, that was, that's what I thought, right? Now, so this is the situation we're in, I mean, and the building is being utilized for a great reason, I, I feel, you know, bad that you guys missed out on that space potentially, but this is the situation we're in now.
Right, well, I, you know, you, you guys can't take the brunt of this because you guys weren't on the board, okay? But you can go back and look at tape after tape, building committee meetings, all this stuff has been brought up, it's been brought up at selectives meetings too, so, I mean, you guys, it's. You can't take the brunt if you were misled, okay? And you know what, it is being used for a good purpose, but at some point, if they're gonna move somewhere else, just don't bulldoze the road.
No, no, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a big, open conversation with everyone invited to talk about it, alright?
And it, this to me just screams the greater good of us needing, really needing a new town hall, right? And the building isn't adequate enough, we're gonna put another Band-Aid by moving people over here.
No, we're just getting worn in, eighteen eighty-eight was built.
Well, the building shouldn't be knocked down.
No, no, I know, oh God, don't even say that, did you say, get that off the table, around here is that, forget about it. No, that's not what I'm saying, but we could use some of the windows, right?
I just didn't wanna be, I wanna be very clear, though, I love the building, but I'm saying.
No, 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 that's not my intent, but, but you're right, and, and, and so, um, I've said this a lot, we're going through growing pace right now, as a community, you know, we are. And uh, you know, water and sewer growing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, we, we were talking about the uh, town hall and the amount of people in it, just a point of interest for the Honorable Board. When Paul and I sat on the board, we had a Building Inspector Scott, that was his last name.
Bobby O.
Bobby O. And he called me down in the cellar once and he said to me, I want to make you aware or something, I said, what am I looking at? There was little flakes around the granite post.
Oh, the granite was breaking down.
And I said, uh, what, what am I looking at, he said, the granite, there's so much weight on the granite, it's starting to flake off, the pressure is cracking the granite. And I said, what causes that, he says, more weight than the building was designed to handle, so much pressure that the granite posts were starting to flake off.
That's terrifying.
So.
And this is, this was years ago, right?
The more weight you get out of that building, the better off you're gonna be, I mean, we added some lolly columns to kind of support it.
Yeah.
But uh, I think that's just an interesting point to put to back.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
You get weight out of that building, probably get extended life expectancy of that building, anyway, just, just.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it.
Comment, you know.
When I was, when I was treasurer for many, many years, we actually had to bring in and build pilings underneath the safe, the, the, uh, in the basement for the safe, in the treasurer's office, tax collector's office. And um, the uh, town clerk's office, because the, the floor was sagging.
Alright, well, Dave, you guys, they're gonna move on?
Luann, you better hang on.
I know, I'm on the second floor, I'm going, wait a minute.
Make a motion to the chairman.
Second, like, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you for your time.
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Be in touch soon on, to keep this thing moving forward.
Appreciate you all coming.
Now, back to our normal, normal scheduled events. Our discussion of possible uses for the Living Trust donations from Renee. How do you pronounce this last name?
I know, the first name was Rennie.
Rennie?
It's Rennie.
Rennie?
Chobino?
Sha- Chobino?
Chobino, Renee Chobino. Okay, so, we have um, three thousand twenty-three dollars in this trust. Uh, some suggested expenditures would be to upgrade the existing phone lines equipment, which is fifteen hundred, and also installations of a Cat five lines for five phones. I do not know what a Cat five line is.
Internet line, ethernet.
Okay, ethernet?
It's a, it's a, I, 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 yeah, you're asking a word, all I know is, it's, 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 it's a little bit bigger than the regular, what you would, like a phone line.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you carry more data and stuff.
Yeah, it's when you have to use um, like internet for your phones and stuff like that, so.
So that'd be option one, another option we got here is to streamline the process of collecting parking fees at the boat ramp, um, so it, using a kiosk or pay-by-phone app. Of course, so I think that this is another really good idea. Now, do you think, how much do you think that the option two would actually cost?
Actually, I had a conference call today with Park Global, um, and for municipalities, they are gonna send me a list of all the ones they do, I've used their service in Somerville, it's very easy to use.
I have too.
On a nap on your phone, um, and for municipalities, they charge nothing.
What?
For, for infrastructure, they give you the signs, they'll give you the stickers, so they'll get, put the signs up in the parking lot and like, up to like five or six signs that will say how to use it. Um, any stickers and things like that, that they can provide us, literature, um, they don't charge a municipality anything other than when in terms that transaction is made, it's a charge of thirty-five cents per transaction.
That goes to them?
That goes to them, and then you have two options, one is if you, we can either encourage the credit card processing and. With what we already have set up, like if we have three percent with a credit card company or whatever it is, we could do all the transactions inside and then send them a check for their card, or they can do it with theirs.
They charge us thirty-five cents?
They would charge us thirty-five cents plus whatever their processing fee is, I think they said it was two percent, I have it written down, um, for each transaction, so you might wanna.
That seems easier.
Yeah, it seems very simple, um, and I have it, I, I think it's on the seventeenth or something, it's on an upcoming agenda to discuss using, utilizing them and we're gonna discuss it tomorrow at the um, working group for the open space for those.
I'm impressed, that's a good, great business model I have.
I've used our systems and they're great.
Yeah, yeah, easy peasy, I use them too, I used to live in Somerville, so I have to, you know.
So we may wanna expand option two, if that's what you wanna go with, and also say that we would do it for summer twenty-two for both the boat ramp and the beach. And so you could also charge parking fees twenty-four seven and you would have like an attendant that would come whenever, you know, obviously we don't have someone there all the time. But they use an app on their, on the phone, which we would have to probably buy a town-owned phone, where they would just log in and they, it just gives them a list of everybody who's paid, so if there's not, your plate number isn't on this list, you get a ticket.
Okay, so now, do we, so just to clarify, do we need money for option two then, if it's, if they're gonna provide all the infrastructure, or is it?
Yeah, I don't see where you're gonna actually probably need money for that, I don't know, um, an option one, we probably need to upgrade the phone syst-, we definitely need to upgrade the phone system at the Council on Aging. Lola's prepared um, for an upcoming meeting, I think it's Monday's, uh, cost analysis from five different companies on what it would cost if we went with Comcast, Verizon and a couple of others. And, or also the vertical eight-by-eight phone system that we have at town hall is another option, um.
I feel like I've been hearing about them needing a new phone system for a long time.
Right, so originally, the original plan when they brought in the vertical eight-by-eight system was to also deploy, it's in town hall now, but also deploy the same system at the Highway Department, the Council on Aging and. The hi- highway, in the Fire Department, the Highway and the Fire Department are happy and satisfied with their current phone systems, so I kind of feel like, why bother?
Yeah.
Um, the vertical system is significantly more expensive, if we were to go, right now we pay about five hundred dollars a month at town hall, if we add those other areas, our bill goes over a thousand a month. For phones, which seems like a lot to me, so, um, she's gotten significant lower quotes from like Comcast, which I believe is what they have already over there, so, and that would. She'll be able to speak to that or give you some information on it at an upcoming meeting, so you may wanna, it may end up using all of that three thousand.
Alright, so that's, so, okay, so I'm, 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 then I think I like option one, um, do you have to vote on this for now, or should?
This was just for you to kind of decide i- if these are one of the options you want, or is there another way that you'd like to use this money? Cause there's no restriction on it whatsoever, so if there's something else that you would like to do.
Throw a party?
Um, there's no restriction, but, you know, I think they would want something, you know, lasting and that would benefit the town, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm being facetious, but.
So I don't know if you have any other ideas?
No, I mean, nothing comes to mind right now, but um, in, in one, it, I mean, yeah, so.
We'll be voting on the eight-two meeting.
Okay, alright, so if, if, if anyone thinks of anything.
No, this is good.
Yeah, okay, alright, great. Next is uh, discussion of vote on approval of agreement between Town of Free Town and Salteen Warrior, Sultan Warrior. Uh, Inc., effective seven tw- one twenty, twenty-one through six thirty twenty twenty-two for Ha- Highway Salt. So, looks pretty straightforward, I will entertain a motion to approve this contract.
Motion made, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion of vote, uh, on approval proposal from Environmental Partners to begin required work on the MS four stormwater, stormwater permit. Some page nineteen.
So I've learned a lot about stormwater.
Yeah, why don't you tell us then?
So basically, there's a larger proposal that was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, as Kim had referred to earlier tonight. Um, what we had right now was this twenty-six thousand dollars and change that we already have that's approved and we can utilize it now. And so I went back to Environmental Partners, asked them to do a proposal to get us, it's a ten-year permit that we have, we are entering, we just entered into year four and we've done nothing. So we have four years to catch up on, so by this proposal, we can spend the monies that we have available now and it's only gonna get us, you know, up to maybe year two. And then um, we have an article that we're gonna formulate for fall, fall town meeting to ask for the hundred and thirty thousand dollars to get us up through year three and into parts of year four.
And then we might actually be able to get that money from?
We may be, Kim and I had talked briefly today about the ARPA money, may be able to cover that as well, so then we could get up to date where we need it to be, we are required by law to follow the guidelines of this permit and we're really significantly behind.
Okay, so that's, seems pretty straightforward, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Environmental Partners to begin required work on MS four stormwater permit.
Motion made, second.
Right, any discussion?
The only thing I will add, I'm sorry, I'm not.
No, discussion, it's a discussion.
Yeah. Do we, is this something that we can put out in R F P on after the fact, I wonder, something for us to look into, it's obviously a lot of money that we'll be spending on this?
I don't know.
We should probably possibly look into whether or not we invite some other companies in on this, cause we're just saying, okay, yeah, we're using this company, this is what they're telling us, well, we could be finding out what's spending, we're getting a great deal or it's just, it's a significant one.
Yeah.
Too much, so, something to think about down the road, it's the only reason why I bring it up, I wasn't involved in obviously the initial part of this. Something I'm confused about, you said this is the second year of this contract?
This is year four, we just entered year four and it's a ten-year permit.
Okay, but are we obligated to stay with this contract?
Yeah.
We have a contract.
There's no signed contract.
Oh, okay, alright, it's just the permit is ten years.
Right, the permit is ten years and this is the company that can assist us doing this.
Doing the actual service, so, alright, so.
And I believe Kim had said, and I could be wrong, that because this is engineering, it doesn't have to go through.
Yeah, I think it's outside of.
The permit's outside of the procurement process.
Yeah. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. So, this is agenda number seven, discussion of vote on the length, this is months of license for the Free Town Food Pantry. And, so, I talked to Craig about this a little earlier. Uh, he, I think he was, um, his understanding was that it was a twenty-four-month contract. But I think that we have the right to terminate it at any time.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so, I think that twenty-four months works for me. What'd you forget?
My hat and glasses, I think, I don't know anymore. Probably, you're not an executive session, did I?
No, no, you're good, you're good.
Did I just bludgeon?
The door's open, you're, you're, the door's open, public.
So yeah, that, back to your point.
There you go.
Twenty-four months, I think, is a reasonable timeframe into, you know, with it, we're gonna be able to do stuff over next door, that they'll be able to decide.
Yeah, so, so I'll entertain a motion to um, to vote, approve motion to have twenty-four months for the li- the length of license for the Free Town Food Pantry.
Motion made, second.
Alright, uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So number eight is now off of our agenda, correct?
Correct.
Alright, great. Alright, now Personnel Board, George, you're up.
Okay.
George, on this first one, you may wanna abstain, cause your wife is on the list, and we need to remove Roger Martin.
Uh.
Off the list.
Why the?
He doesn't wanna continue doing that.
Oh, okay, alright, so, um, we're scratching Roger Martin off this list. Because he doesn't wanna do what he can do with anymore. And uh, so you all have the list of uh, workers?
Yep.
And uh, so we just need to vote on that and uh.
Yeah.
Basically it.
So I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. The reason I have to abstain is my wife is.
Yeah, I hear you.
I feel, so, uh.
Okay.
Okay.
One more.
Uh, discuss and vote on the extension of Tim McIntosh's contract to go through page thirty-one twenty twenty. And that is, I understand that, right, this is only for negotiations with the unions?
Yeah, or if we had any kind of office needs or anything like that, we could ask questions.
Yeah, he's still around, I think it's nice to have him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's ten a motion.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that was quick and easy.
Okay. That's it, we're done, nothing to discuss.
Alright, so, I think we're all, are we all good here?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.